Good evening. I want to welcome everyone and call the order of the meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for the date of November the 10th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show there is a quorum of board members present. Myself, Steven Shodrock, Ms. Dr. Deliana Del Martinez, Mr. Marshall Flair, Jason Savota, Ms. Bana Reed, and Dr. Joel Oden. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. This is an open meeting and we welcome members of the public to observe. Please note that the public comments should be reserved for the public comment portion of the agenda. We kindly ask that no comments or questions be made outside of that time. Should you have comments or questions, you're welcome to contact the administration directly. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Mr. Flair will now lead us from here, followed by Dr. Oden.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve our students, teachers, and community. We thank you for the dedication of our educators, the curiosity of our students, and the support of our families. Lord, as we approach the holiday season, we ask for your hand of protection and guidance. Grant safe travels to all. Rest for those who have worked hard and joy in every home. Bless the decisions we make this evening, that they may reflect wisdom, compassion, and shared commitment to the success and well-being of every child. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord is our God. On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one indivisible. Dr. Martinez will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Mr. Savota will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board recitation of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and physically responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support for all stakeholders.
Ms. Reed will now recite our overview of the good governance and code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of essay that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, the code of ethics are, we are highlighting, honor and conduct. I will tell the truth. I will share my views while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. I will base my decision as fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Our good governance indicator for the month is mission, vision, and belief, and comprehensive statement of goals are developed and in place for the district.
We will now have our recognition for the Teacher of the Month, Mr. Riley. How so? Would you start?
Thank you, Mr. Shodrock, Dr. Gilstrap, board. This time Damian Estrella. Mr. Merton, could y'all step up here, please? It is my privilege to present to you the Florisville Middle School Students of the Month and the Teacher of the Month. I will start with Mr. Damian Valdez. He is one of our Students of the Month. Damian is a lifelong student of Florisville Independent School District. He attended Florisville North Elementary and is now an eighth grade student at Florisville Middle School. He is an excellent student, making the A.B. honor roll every year at Florisville Middle School. His hard work is why he is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. He is also involved outside of school, having recently joined the Leo Club, sponsored by the local Lions Club, to engage in support to our community. His favorite subjects are reading, science, art, and principles of audiovisual technology. Outside of school, he enjoys movies, games with his friends, and taking care of his dog, Oriole. He also likes to write horror stories. He's undecided yet about his future career choices, but he knows he wants to attend the University of Texas at Austin, and who could blame him? One thing he would really like you to know about him is that he's very creative and imaginative. Damian's hard work, excellent academic performance, and exceptional character make him an ideal choice as the Florisville Middle School Student of the Month. Next, may I present to you Estrella de la Santos. Estrella has been a student at Florisville ISD since the fourth grade. Her exceptional academic record has resulted in her making the A.B. honor roll in sixth grade and the A. honor roll in both seventh and eighth grade. Her maturity and responsibility are the primary reasons she was selected as a front office aide and as an eighth grade ambassador to a class of our new sixth graders this year. She is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and plays an active role in university interscholastic league activities. She participates in basketball, one-act play, poetry, reading, impromptu speaking, and ready writing. She is also very active in our campus journalism program. Somehow, she manages to find time outside of school to play softball, work on this, work the summer children's program for her church, and participate in the Future Farmers of America. She is also active in folklorical dance, and you may have seen her dancing during the recent Peanut Festival parade. Estrella wants to study journalism in college. The one thing she wants you to know about her is that she believes she can do anything, and the accomplishments I have just summarized certainly prove that to be true. Estrella is an outstanding scholar and a very worthy recipient of the award as Florisville Middle School Student of the Month. Finally, let me present to you our Teacher of the Month. You may recognize him. This is Mr. David Merton. Mr. Merton has started his career in education as a paraprofessional in 1998, and he's been a teacher since 2002. He has also been the golf coach for Florisville ISD for a total of 10 years. You could say that Florisville is in his blood. His wife is our campus library aide, and he has two sons, one in Virginia and one in the Navy, and all of them are Florisville High School alumni. Mr. Merton says he learned he wanted to be a teacher because of the joy he feels in seeing kids grow to adulthood. He is also willing to admit he feels pride in the role he plays in helping students achieve success. He has always found joy in helping and teaching others. He recalls making up gains when he was in the first grade and teaching others how to play them. As a high school senior, he went to an elementary school to tutor and mentor students and loved it. He says that seeing a kid click with what you are teaching brings great satisfaction. Mr. Merton started at Florisville Middle School as an English Language Arts and Reading teacher, but two years ago, he initiated our campus journalism program. He also acts as emcee for campus events such as our pep rallies. He has already helped his students to accomplish remarkable results, as can be seen in the campus video productions known as "The Claw," which are written, narrated, and produced by his students. He wants you to be, he wants to be known for helping students to grow regardless of where they started. Mr. Merton dreams of being a motivational speaker, but he already motivates the students and the staff he interacts with every day. It is my privilege to present to you the Florisville Middle School Teacher of the Month, Mr. David Merton.
So I'll start off with Damian. I really appreciate your wide variety of interests and, and, and things that you want to do. The University of Texas, we can talk about that a little bit later. But a guy who like four, I mean, it's probably Halloween every day of the year for you. I'm excited for that, but you've done a lot of great things. You've done a lot of great interests. You do a lot of great things, both for the school and outside the school, and it certainly reflects that. We appreciate that. And Ms. Estrella, you're the same way. It seems like, how do you find time to sleep with all the things that you do? But, but it definitely shows you're well-rounded in what you do and what you put forward. And as you said in your comment, there's nothing that you can't, you can't overcome or disdain. So I appreciate that. So good congratulations to both of you all. Mr. Merton?
Making up your own games. I guess you make them up. You always win.
But, but thank you for your, for your service. I know you've been with the school, with the scholarship forever. It's great to see what you're doing with the kids with "The Claw." That's some real good stuff. We appreciate all your commitment to the kids and everything you do. Thank you all so much. We know Mr. Riley has some certificates for you, and then I believe the Lions Club has, has a little certificate for you.
We've got several things to present. David, we want to say that we appreciate all that you do, and to come, this accomplishment is something that you achieved because you wanted to, and you work at it, and because you love the deal. And Mr. Merton, I've known him for a long time. This is a small gift from, and these are a certificate from the Lions Club. Have our hands up. And the, it's just a small token of thank you, and we appreciate y'all very much coming to, you know, you gotta think of how many teachers or how many students, and y'all risen to the top. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for representing. Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir. Hold your certificate up if you can and get it on stop and make sure it's right. There you go.
Okay, I need to get it. Smile for me. One, two, three. One, two. Part of the rest of the Lions Club, if you'll come up. By the way, we don't want to.
Hold on, I want to say, let, let me have the newspaper.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, Lions Club.
All right, Lions, go on up.
And she's a cop. This is a cop. We have the only, we were the first in the state of Texas to have a club organization. Thanks to this guy.
Congratulations. Don't mind shaking the world with your hands. Too much to hold on. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Thanks very much.
There you go. There you go.
That's right.
Congratulations, man. Put your hands up.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Scott, how's it? I'd like to recognize Mr. Mute is in attendance. He arrived around 6:43, so the agenda and the notes will look like that. Welcome, sir. All right. Now we'll move on to our community character award, Ms. Marshall.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Gilstrap, I would like to call up Joyce and David Stinson as our recognitionees for tonight's community character award. So Joyce and David Stinson embody the very essence of Florisville ISD's community character values through their compassion, leadership, and unwavering commitment to serving others. In 2010, what began as a simple class project...
You don't know their story, but it's, it's something that you understand they need, so you're there to provide that, and it truly embodies the character that we expect from them.
This award really does not belong to David and to me. It belongs to the members of the Florisville United Methodist Church. They have reached into their pockets again and again and again and come up with the money to buy the toilet paper. Dave and I are in a position now that physically we are not able to do this anymore, and I'm delighted to say that two of your recently retired teachers have picked it up, Catherine and Brandon Johns, which I think is really great because they've seen the impact that having a little kid come to school with, they've had a shampoo, or they're getting toothpaste and toothbrushes, and their, their mom is getting detergent to wash dishes with. It's, it's been a very, what would we say, emotional journey for us. We've hardly, probably never seen any of the recipients, and we wanted it to be that way. But God touched our hearts, our church got involved, and it's, boy, when something like that gets rolling, you can't stop.
You can all donate, by the way.
Thank you all very much. We can take a picture real quick.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Y'all started something great. I'm so proud. Such a great job.
Thank you so much. What you guys do, I wish you guys... Y'all brought it on. It's all, it's all so great. Thank you, everybody. It's, it's growing all the time. We just got, she told us, we got 15 or more things.
Cause last month, double.
Yeah.
Thank you. Got it all, got it started.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our last recognition is for the cross-country, Coach Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Shodrock, Dr. Gilstrap, board trustees. I'm excited and honored to be able to recognize our state cross-country team again. Come on, come on, come on. Here to see you guys as the star of the show. Just a true example of the program and culture that's being built by Coach Rod. I think they've done a great job. This is their second year being here, recognized at the board meeting for the same honors, but I know that they've achieved so much more and grown. I'm really excited and proud to be here to recognize our state cross-country team, not just for their early mornings, which you all know that they run, but I've watched them endure elements that are not real fun, but they're tougher than most, and I'm super proud of what they were able to accomplish this, this year, and I'll turn it over to Coach Rod to recognize this team.
Yeah, so our both boys and girls had a fantastic season, as you know. We've had a lot of great success the past few years. I think this was the fourth year in a row that the guys have won a district championship, and the third year in a row for the girls, so they've swept together the last three years in a row. This was the third year in a row for the guys to make it to the state cross-country meet as a team. It's only been done three times, and they're the class that's done it three times, and for the girls, this is their second year in a row, and the same thing, it's only been done two times. So the fact that they were able to do it together is an amazing accomplishment, but if you ask them, it wasn't a surprise for them. They've had this goal in mind, you know, for the past few years, and it wasn't a matter of if, it was just a matter of when. And so now, you know, we have the mentality of, what are we gonna do next? So this year, the guys were ninth in the state of Texas out of 16, which we were 14th last year, so we made a huge jump. Our top finisher was Kayden Cypress. He was seventh place overall, so out of 152 runners, he was seventh place. He was all-state for us. On the girl's side, we were 13th overall, so we moved up a spot from 14th last year. Our top finisher was Nora Felon. She was 25th. She just missed all-state by a couple of spots in one of the organizations we're with, but they do a fantastic job. Like I said, Coach Martinez said it great, you know, they're here when a lot of people aren't, and they're going through things that most people don't or don't want to. But some things we always say is, you know, we have a great group of kids, but we have a really group of parents as well and a good group of support staff. I think Coach Martinez does an amazing job, and the rest of our staff as well. They know these kids, you know? It's, it's a sport that we usually say doesn't get a lot of recognition, but almost every single coach, every single day, will go out and say, where's Nora? Where's Kayden? Where's, I mean, people are going out of their way to go talk to these kids, and the same thing with these kids, so our coaches and the community as well. You know, they have grown a lot in popularity, so to speak, because most people know them, and that's, that's a good thing. So they've done an awesome job and super proud of them, super proud of this town and program and everything that we've done, so.
Introduce them. I want to introduce them for you.
Yes, so this is Nora Felon, senior, Alexis Scott, junior, Alexis Daighy, sophomore, Desiree Benavides, sophomore, Lana Garza, sophomore, Kelly Wing, sophomore, Tori Cruz, freshman, and then we're missing another freshman, Cara Jones. Senior, Isaiah Cruz, junior, Jack Zorowski, senior, Joshua Simmons, sophomore, Kayden Cypress, sophomore, Riley Silva, freshman, Gavin Holbeck, and senior, Denny Witten, and then we're missing senior Ricky Barajas as well.
Congratulations, guys. I just want to say, one thing I will say is, Monday after the state meet on Saturday, I was up here early, and I saw y'all running in the morning after the state meet. They don't even take a day off. Maybe they were still on a cooldown. Congratulations to y'all. We'll give y'all a round of applause.
There's nothing better than setting a goal for yourself and then reaching that goal. It's very empowering. And like, I know that many of us feel like, oh, you know, what's, what's fun about running or being a cross-country sport? Sometimes it may not be as fun, but we know that it takes a lot of focus, it takes a lot of perseverance. It's not easy doing this day after day, so we commend you for your success and your dedication. What you're doing is you're not just building that outer strength, you're also building that inner strength. And we look forward, I counted, I think five of you are seniors, so we look forward, you know, to the rest of you continue success in cross-country in the years ahead, and we wish those of you that are seniors the best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you for all you do.
Good job. Congratulations. Awesome job. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Congratulations. Y'all, y'all more than welcome. Come on up. All right. Miss Petrie, do we have any public comments tonight? Thank you. Next, we will have an action item to consider the approval as the canvassing and certification of the declared winner of the November 4th, 2025 election for single-member District Two by Mr. Schröber.
Good evening, Superintendent of Schools, Board President, and Board of Trustees. In board book, I have attached the summary results report by precinct and voter type for your viewing. In addition, I gave you a hard copy of the election results for your viewing, which you can find in your folder. Your approval for canvassing and certification of these votes is required. By law, it is the board's responsibility to canvass and certify the votes for the declared winner for single-member District Two. On November 4th, 2025, Florisville ISD held a joint election with the County of Wilson to fill the District Two seat on the board currently held by Bana Reed. There was a total of four candidates running for this seat. Early voting was held at the Wilson County Elections Office located in 1103 Fourth Street here in Florisville, Texas. In District Two, a total of 375 votes were cast. The results are as follows. Terrell Shellhouse received 137 votes, followed by David Nieto, who received 92 votes, Bana Reed receiving 88 votes, and Larry Jones receiving 58 votes. Approval is requested for the canvassing and certification of these election results. Board of Trustees, I ask, are there any questions? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the canvassing and certifying the votes for the November 4th, 2025 school board election results and declare as winner, Terrell Shellhouse for District Two as presented.
President, I move to accept administration's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savota, and the second, by Ms. Martinez, to leave further discussions. Show of hands in favor. Vote passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
We will now do our shorting in of... We do want to take a moment real quick just to recognize Ms. Reed for her service. She's been serving on the board now for six years.
Yes.
And you've played a, a role in this community so often, we thought...
So often we talk about this job goes unpaid and unrecognized. Uh, but we do want to make sure you know how much we appreciate that. And not only you serving as a board member, but serving as an educator for a number of years, a retired teacher. And then to come back and play this role, uh, how much I value that as a superintendent and our community values that as well, so.
Yeah, we thank you for your commitment of the six years and what you brought from the education into our board, um, has been immense. And we can't say thank you enough. Your, your perspective and what you bring and then your other commitments inside the community help bring us together as a board and as a community. So I thank you for that.
Ms. Reed, if you don't mind coming around, we have something we'd like to present for you.
We'd like to present this to you for your six years of service. Thank you very much. I want to take a picture real quick. We will now do our swearing in of the board of members, Dr. Gilstrap.
Uh, yes, I'd like to call up, uh, Mr. Shellhouse. If you could step up to the podium, please, along with Mr. Boots, if you could go down to the podium. I also want to introduce, uh, Judge Whitman, so he will come forward and present our oath of office to our two newest board members.
Before I start, uh, Mr. President, Board Members, Chief of Dr. Gilstrap, thanks for letting me do this. Why? Because I was a board school board member thirty years ago and I know what hard work it takes. I mean, I'm telling you, it's hard work. It really was.
Okay, gentlemen, let's be easy. Just gonna repeat after me, okay? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Terrell Shellhouse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Florisville ISD Board of Trustees.
Of the Office of Florisville ISD Board of Trustees.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Name is right over there, has some documents y'all will need to sign. Send him to the principal, he will live there. I don't remember you before, I guess I met you. My dad was Michael.
I love him, you bad boy. Tell me your grandmother is.
That's a good one, you.
Oh, yeah. Most do. It's your house more than that, I think.
Congratulations.
Next on the item, uh, on the agenda is item five B, the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. I will now take nominations for the office of the president.
Mr. President, I have to make a motion to, uh, elect you, uh, as our president again for a few years. And I just want to say, uh, very proud of you. You did a great job, doing a great job, and, and we do appreciate all of you.
Uh, nomination has been made. Do you have any other, any other, uh, nominations? Okay, if there's no other nominations, the nomination is unanimously approved for Steven Shadrach to serve as the Board President. Thank you all. Now we will move on to the, make a motion for, uh, to the vice, yeah, motion for Vice President for the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to nominate Hannah Martin.
Any other nominations for the Vice President for the Board of Trustees? I, if there's no other nominations, the nomination is unofficial, is unanimously approved for Vice President to Dr. Martinez for the Board Vice President. Okay, next we'll have nominations for Secretary.
Uh, I nominate Craig Moots.
Okay, we have a nomination for Craig Moots.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for Secretary for the Board of Trustees? Okay, if there's no other nomination, the nomination is unanimously approved for Craig Moots to serve as the Secretary for the Board of Trustees for Florisville ISD. Do we have nominations for the Treasurer position?
I make a motion, Mr. President, to, uh, for Marshall Flair to serve as Treasurer.
Do we have a nomination from the board?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations for the Treasurer for the Board of Trustees? Okay, if there's no other nomination, the nomination is unanimously approved for Marshall Flair to serve as the Treasurer for Florisville ISD Board of Trustees. Thank you.
So what we'll do is, well, everybody will just stay seated where they're at. We'll shift everybody around next quarter.
We will now have the Superintendent report with Dr. Gilstrap.
Uh, yes, Board Members. First of all, I want to say congratulations to our Mighty Tiger Band and both cross-country teams. We recognized our cross-country teams, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, both of these groups qualified and competed at the state level, uh, just, just this past week. And they do a great job of not only representing the district, but our community. Their time and sacrifice that they put into it and their families put into it, uh, really bodes to their character and to their talents and abilities, and we are very proud of them, uh, to show that off at the highest level at the state. Uh, we will be recognizing our Mighty Tiger Band in December for their qualifications for state. So congratulations to them. Our track renovations continue to move forward. Hellus, the construction company, which is doing the work. Uh, they are, they have completed the demo process. They actually already started the asphalt repair. They started that over the weekend and continued it this week. Uh, the needed asphalt repair was approximately thirty-one thousand dollars, which is under our budgeted amount of fifty thousand dollars. So we are coming in under that budget. Uh, the project is on schedule to be completed in time for track season. We will have to make a few minor adjustments to the soccer season, soccer practices. Uh, but Coach Martinez is working with those programs to, uh, to make sure they, they have access to the field, uh, so that they can play their games and practices. So that project is moving along. Uh, Region Twenty has put together a board summit, uh, that will take place and be held at Tapatia Springs in Bernie on February the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. That Sunday, which is February twenty-second, from two to five, they will have and they will offer, provide the, uh, the training, the required training for all board members evaluating and improving student outcomes, otherwise known as ISO training. Uh, that is a new one this year. They revamped it. TDA did revamp that. And so all board members are going to be required to get that training this year. It would be a great opportunity to go and get that face-to-face. I know it's a Sunday afternoon. It would be a little drive over to Bernie. Uh, but if all eight board members or all seven board members along with myself can attend, we can also count that as our team of eight training. So it is a great opportunity, uh, to knock out, you know, two birds with one stone. I do know that it's during the, uh, San Antonio Livestock Show, uh, but again, it's just, uh, three hours on a Sunday afternoon. So hopefully we can make that happen. Uh, they will be offering other trainings on the other days, but it's not necessarily required that we go. Uh, the board members can still go to TASM SLI in June and get the other trainings that they have done in the years past, which is another great opportunity for, uh, to knock those continuing education hours out face-to-face. Tomorrow, on Tuesday, November the eleventh, at nine o'clock in the morning, our Air Force Junior ROTC program will be, uh, performing or will be hosting their annual Veterans Day program at the high school by Flagpole. Uh, our community, as well as our board members, is welcome to attend. Uh, we want as many people as we can to get out there. It is a really and truly a great opportunity, uh, for our students to recognize and honor, uh, those that are serving and those that have served. Uh, and, and for those, remembering those that, uh, that sacrificed so much for us to have our freedoms today. So it is our Veterans Day program we do every year. Uh, after that, we will have a reception in the high school library where our kids really get to mingle with some of those veterans and listen to some of those stories. It's really, uh, great to see, uh, the young generation, uh, interacting with them and really sitting down at the table and listening to some of their stories. So again, our board members and our community are welcome to attend that event. We'd like to recognize and congratulate Dr. Liana Martinez. She recently completed the doctoral program for Our Lady of the Late University and successfully defended her dissertation, which is no small feat. I can assure you of that. Uh, not only is it congratulations to her and her sacrifice and time, but also her family. Uh, it, it's more than one person that reaches an accomplishment like that. It really takes a sacrifice from everybody around you and your support system. Uh, and so congratulations and we want to recognize that just briefly. Thank you very much. And, and Mr. Shadrach's already gotten used to calling you Dr. Martinez. So congratulations. Including your board packet at your desk are a list of our November and December campus and district events. We encourage you, as well as our community, to get out and support some of our student activities during the holiday season. We've got band concerts. We've got some other evening events, so we encourage you to get out and do that. Also included in the superintendent, uh, update is the, uh, list of current openings, as well as an update on our personnel sheet. Below, listed on the, uh, update report, is also our enrollment and attendance through Thursday, October the thirtieth. Uh, as you can see, we, our enrollment does still, is trending down, uh, below where we have been in the past. However, our attendance percentage is up where we, where we've been in the past. So it is something we continue to monitor and, and make sure we have all of our kids located and where they are, what, what their story is, so that we're meeting their needs. So again, board members, I always encourage you to please schedule a meeting with me if you ever have any questions, uh, or concerns. Make sure you can meet with me anytime. Are there any questions?
What has our attendance been on the Fridays?
Uh, on our Friday camps, I did not get a number for this past Friday, but the other ones were averaging seventy-seven students. I'm, I'm not sure, Ms. Marshall, she may have already left.
I don't have one from this past Friday.
This past Friday, we don't have yet.
But we did have a reduction in the number of students who were, um, enrolled for that Friday. I think it was like seventy-ish of them enrolled.
So I, I will say we've, we've been averaging about twenty no-shows. So we have about that many sign up, but then we only have about a hundred show, or sign up, but only about seventy-seven show up. And so Ms. Marshall has done a great job of communicating with those families to make sure they know three strikes and, and they don't get off of the service anymore. But I don't have a number for this past Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Next of all, we'll have the district improvement form review by Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, Board President Shadrach, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gilstrap. I'd like to share with y'all tonight our October formative review of our district improvement plan. Again, I will just share a brief summary of our district improvement plan, but the entire district improvement plan is in your board packet, should you like more information. Um, last month in October, the district leadership team did conduct the formative review and reviewed progress on all four goals. Each campus and department did provide feedback and evidence toward goal, uh, goal attainment. As a reminder, our district improvement plan goals are the same as our goals for the strategic plan or the same goals that you recited at the beginning of this meeting, so that we are all aligned and working toward the same path. Goal one is excellent student outcomes. There are four objectives and nineteen strategies for this goal. We've made moderate progress in two and some progress in seventeen strategies, so this is our larger goal of the four. Such as FISD is in data collection year of implementing the teacher incentive allotment, which is focused on students making at least one year of growth. Currently, a hundred and fifty-seven teachers are eligible for distinction, which is more than half of our teachers. The district has also increased personnel to provide services for students with dyslexia at FMS and FHS this year. Several campuses have held or are scheduled to hold, uh, parent engagement events for populations such as GT and bilingual, as well as our early college high school night, which is scheduled for later this week. And FMS is also now offering three new CTE courses to help students begin their programs of study early. So all of these are, um, actions that we're putting in place to help us maintain our excellent student outcomes. Goal two is superior workplace environment. There are three objectives and six strategies. We have made some progress in all six strategies. In addition to continuing to offer our first-year teacher academy, the teaching and learning department is also offering a special education teacher academy this year, designed to increase capacity in our support facilitation teachers and provide needed supports to our sped students. We are listening sessions have also been held at three campuses and administration has already provided supports suggested by teachers in these sessions. Staff continue to serve on various committees, including calendar, TIA, and instructional materials. And then I tried to pick out at least one data point for y'all on each goal. And so one notable data point in recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff is that seventy percent of new-to-FISD teachers indicated that schedule or calendar was their motivation to apply at FISD.
Oh, that speaks loungely.
In addition to great, Board of Trustees.
We thought it was all a song.
Goal three is exceptional customer service and community engagement. There are three objectives and five strategies for this goal. We've had considerable progress in two, moderate progress in one, and some progress in two strategies. Some notice, notable strategies with traction include campuses holding various attendance incentives, such as block parties and popsicles with the principals. The family services department has excelled, as you heard tonight, in creating partnerships with local organizations and provided needing, uh, needed supports to families such as school supplies, weakened food backpacks, and even homecoming dresses. Uh, one data point to draw attention to is the increase in the average of website and app visits as our communication continues to extend to even more stakeholders. So over the last two years, we are averaging about seven thousand more hits a month. Goal four is strategic resource management. There are four objectives and seven strategies in this goal. We've had considerable progress in three, moderate progress in three, and some progress in one. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget, the board approved raises for all staff above the requirements of House Bill Two and increased the employer contribution for health insurance, which helps to offer competitive compensation pa- packages. This is all while maintaining, maintaining a balanced budget. Our safety and security teams have increased training on behavioral threat assessments and are now sharing out additional training videos to students. and are now sharing out additional training videos to students and the community as a new, uh, piece for us this year. The district continues to monitor our enrollment, as well as our CTE pathway needs, to make sure we're managing our facility strategically. One data point, uh, we can continue to monitor is the completed work orders through our maintenance department, which is holding strong at ninety-nine percent. Our next steps will be presented in our February board meeting, um, after meeting again with the district leadership team. The summative review will also be presented in July. And at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now have our public hearing over the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Call First with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year presented by Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Mr. Shadrak, members of the board. Um, this evening, we will hold our public hearing to discuss the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school first rating. So again, this is the twenty-four, twenty-five rating, but it is based on the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So the audit, you didn't approve this past month, October, but a year ago, October. So again, the rule and statutory authority for the school first is Title nineteen of the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter one oh nine point zero zero one E eight, subchapter A A Commissioner's Ruling Concerning Financial Accounting Rating System. Why school first and encourages public schools to better manage their financial resources, ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices, and creates transparency and disclosures, disclosures, the quality of local management and decision-making processes. Basis for school first rulings, um, ratings are based, TDA uses the following data sources to calculate school first, um, the AFR, the annual financial report, the financial data feed, um, the TSDS PIM system, the finance, foundation school program and other sources, including but not limited to the IRS, TRS, and Texas Force Commission. School first rating timeline, based on analysis of FISD's financial data for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which was July first, twenty-three through June thirty of twenty-four. Um, preliminary ratings came out August eighth. We have the opportunity to appeal in writing until September ninth, so for a month. And then if there's no, uh, appeal, the preliminary rating becomes final on September tenth, the day after the, the final time to appeal. So rating system is like anything else, you've got an A, B, C, or an F, um, based on these, these numbers here. So now we're going to go through each indicator, there are twenty-one of them. So the first, um, indicator, which is a critical indicator. So if you fail any of these critical indicators, you fail, um, the entire rating. But, um, this one is just when you report, when we report our data, we upload it into the data feed. You have to do that within thirty days of November twenty-seventh, if you're a June thirtieth school year. Um, so they received ours on November the twelfth, it was due December the twenty-seventh. So yes, we passed this indicator. Auditor opinion, was there unmodified opinion on the AFR for fiscal years, for financial statements as a whole? Um, yes, it wasn't, unqualified. Monetary default on debt, was the school district in compliance with all payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end? Yes, we were. Um, timely payments to governmental entities, including TRS, IRS, workers' comp, any other governmental agencies? Yes, we paid all those payments on time. Indicator five, was the unrestricted net position balance, was the total net position in the government activities column in the statement of net position greater than zero? Yes, it was, so we passed that indicator. Um, indicator six, uh, was the average change in assigned and unassigned fund balance over three years, less than twenty-five percent decrease? Or did the current years assigned, uh, and unassigned fund balances exceed seventy-five days of operating expenditures? Um, it didn't decrease more than twenty-five percent last three years, so we didn't pass that indicator. Number of days of cash on hand, was it just, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures, excluding facilities acquisition? Um, our mathematical breakdown at June thirtieth for cash on hand, this is not our fund balance, this is just the cash on hand at the end of the, end of the year, was fifty-nine point oh four five, five days. To get the full ten points, you needed more than ninety days. So we're, we're right there. I mean, we're, we're at fifty-nine, fifty-nine days. Again, it's a cash, it could be a check that was cashed before the end of the year that if they would have cashed it July second, it would have been in our. So again, it, and we also had a receivable from the state of seven point two million dollars at that point. So, yeah. So, uh, at six-thirty, we had a seven point two million dollar receivable from the state, which they paid out July and August. So, um, so again, we got four points there, so the full ten. Current assets to current liabilities, shorts covered or short-term debt, you needed greater than a three. We were at three point two eight two three, so we received the full ten points there. Um, indicator nine, general fund revenues equal or exceed, uh, expenditures. If you'll recall, last year at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, we did have a deficit in our financial statements of about half a million dollars. Um, had we not had that deficit, we would have gotten the full ten points here. Because we had a deficit, then they look at number of days on cash on hand. On this one, they're looking at sixty days. We have fifty-nine point oh four. So we were that short of getting the, the ten points. Yeah, so that one, so that one, we didn't get any points because you either had to have your, your revenues had to exceed your spend, expenditures, which ours did not at the end of, again, this is a year ago.
This was the year that we gave a smaller raise, but we had to dip into the fund balance.
Yeah.
Shars was the big, big, big thing that year. That's when they took all that money back and we didn't get that. So again, um, we needed more than sixty days to get the ten points because we did have a, a deficit. Uh, we had fifty-nine point oh four five. Um, indicator ten, again, this year, they're not, they're not, um, scoring this indicator. Indicator eleven, long-term debt to total assets, there again, we needed, uh, less than or equal to point six. We had point four two nine eight. Uh, debt principal and interest payments, mathematical score there is one point nine three one. We needed less than or equal to a four to get the full ten points. We did. Um, administrative cost ratio, this is looking at, um, how top-heavy are you? And it's based on a sliding scale. So again, um, less than or equal to point one one five one, we were at point zero eight, eight seven. So we got the full ten points there. So that again is telling us that we are, we are not top-heavy, um, in the district. Students to staff ratio, did the school district not have a fifteen percent decline in students to staff ratio over the last three years? We did not, therefore we get the full points there, or we do pass the indicator there. ADA within the allotted range, again, that's based on a mathematical sliding scale there for, for our side district. We needed, um, less than or equal to point two five. We were at point zero zero nine eight, nine zero. Full five points on that one. PIMS to AFR comparison, so this is looking at what we submit through PIMS versus what is on our audit. So if those are within a three percent variance, then you pass this indicator, which we did. Material weaknesses, did the independent auditor, uh, report any material weaknesses in your audit? They did not, so we pass this indicator. Material non-compliance, same thing again there, did they not note any material non-compliance with grants? They did not, therefore we got the full ten points. Um, required postings, did we require, did we post everything we were required to post in the time we were required to post it? We did, so we get the five, full five points on this one. Um, board discussion of property taxes, uh, did the school board discuss the district's property values meeting within a hundred and twenty days of the district adopting its budget? Yes, so we pass that one. Um, did we have to have any adjusted repayment schedules for any repayment that we, that would be recaptured to foundation school program? We don't have recapture, so we don't have to worry about that one. So we, uh, we pass that one. So here's just a summary of all of our indicators. You can see where on indicator seven, we had four points as opposed to the ten, and on indicator nine, we had zero points as opposed to the ten. So therefore, we had an eighty-four, which is a B, which is above standard. Any questions on any of those indicators? This is a public hearing, so if there is any, any questions from the audience, I can take those as well.
No, but like on indicator nine, we've got zero points, but that's, we went back, that was from years ago.
That's from the audit, yeah, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year school year, when we were in the deficit.
Yeah.
The teachers.
Yeah, we took the deficit.
We found a smaller raise, anticipating some additional revenue from the state. The legislature did not come through with that, coupled with, I believe.
About seven hundred thousand dollars.
Which we recouped about two hundred thousand of that. There was some other, something else that happened anyway, that, that.
Insurance bill went up.
That's what it was.
So we try to do what's right.
We had our fund balance, and I mean, that's what it's for. We are still above standard.
And again, it stays cash on hand, not fund balance. Cause again, with that seven point two million dollars that the state owed us, that goes into our revenue, so that goes into our fund balance, but we don't have that cash at six-thirty. We don't get it until July, August, and then settle up in September.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I just want to say, um, Ms. Angel, her department, they do a wonderful job. The first rating is something that comes from the state. This is not something we make up to, to, you know, get some kind of recognition. Uh, these are high standards and, uh, her department does a great job of being transparent, uh, making sure that we're presenting information to the board, to our community, whenever it comes to our finances. And everybody knows where we are and how we stand. And so, um, thank you very much, Ms. Angel.
We've got a few more things that are required in the first rating, um, disclosures. Again, one of those being, again, this goes back to Title nineteen, the Tac Code one oh nine. Um, superintendent's current employment contract, a summary schedule for the fiscal year twelve months of total reimbursements received by the superintendent and each board member. Um, a summary schedule of fiscal year per dollar amount compensation and/or fees received by the superintendent from any other school district or any other outside entity in exchange for professional contracting and personal services. A summary schedule for the fiscal year for the total dollar amount by the executive officers and board members of gifts of economic value of greater than two hundred and fifty dollars or more in the aggregate. A summary schedule for the fiscal year of the dollar amount by board members for the aggregate amount of business transactions with the school district. And finally, any additional information that the board, um, thinks useful. Again, this hearing must be held within two months of receiving the final accountability rating. That's what we're doing this evening. So, um, superintendent's current employment contract can be found on our website under, uh, about us, required postings, operations, finance, twenty-five, twenty-six. And there you can see the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight superintendent contract. These are reimbursements received by the superintendent and each board member over the last twelve months. So again, the financial rating was based on two years ago, this is based on this last year. So this is ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Again, it's not necessarily payments directly to the board member, it could be on behalf of the board member. Um, so that's where you see those totals there. Um, compensation and/or fees received by the superintendent from any other school district outside entity, there were none. Dollar amount, economic value of two hundred, uh, fifty dollars or more by executive officers or board members, there were none. Again, same thing with business transactions with the district by any board member, there were none. Any other questions?
No, I echo what Dr. Gilstrap says, we thank you for what you and your team does to make sure that from the financial and the integrity of our, of our district, that, that we're an A-plus plus.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. It's just a financial hearing, so nobody needs to know.
Next on the agenda is item number six, um, the consent agenda by Dr. Gilstrap.
Uh, yes, board members, presented in consent agenda are typical, uh, financial reports. Uh, but we also have four different donations we want to, uh, get approved by the board. La, is it La Lomita Incorporated, Tech's Best, they have done, uh, a thousand dollar donation to the high school. The Subdaddies, which is the new car wash in town, they have done a donation for eleven hundred sixty-five dollars to the athletic, uh, department. That was a sponsorship for one of our sideline banners. If you've been to the, the last couple of home football games, you might have seen that. MC Forster donated five thousand dollars to elementary life skills classes to meet any of their needs in that classroom. Uh, I just want to say she does an unbelievable job and, and we communicate, we correspond with her and thank her in various ways. We want to recognize that donation for that, uh, that very special group of kids. And then, uh, Coffee Cars and Veterans donating two thousand dollars, uh, to our, uh, Air Force Junior ROTC program to meet any of their needs. So, uh, all of these donations just, just go to the support from our community that they have for our kids and our programs. And so we want to make sure we recognize, uh, each one of them for their donation. Administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
My second, Pat.
I have a motion by Mr. Mute and a second by Dr. Odom. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, show your hands. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
We will now consider the approval of the FISD board operating procedures, again, by Dr. Gilstrap.
Uh, yes, board member, written, written operating procedures are intended to define clearly how we carry out regular board tasks. Many people wrongfully assume, uh, that the way this is performed is from commonly known or common sense, uh, and it is not. It is a deliberate effort for planning and forethought, uh, and making sure we have our procedures as a board in place. This is the, this is the incorrect assumption because we do put effort into it. Uh, these also help any new board members that may be coming on and to kind of educate them on how we operate as a board. It also shows transparency because these are posted on our website, uh, for anybody in the public to see as far as how we conduct, uh, our board business. These board operating procedures are reviewed annually. Uh, anytime we reorganize the board or swear in board members, uh, that's when we put that on the agenda for, uh, approval or review. Uh, there are some adjustments that have been suggested. Uh, I did go through these and made these suggestions based on some of the new laws and requirements from the last legislative session, so that's why you see so many of those. Are there any questions about any of these updates? Provided in the packet is the strike-through version and then also a clean copy of the new board operating procedure. If there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the FISD, uh, board operating procedures as presented.
Does the president move to accept the administration recommendation?
A second.
Can we have a motion by Mr. Sabada and a second by Dr. Dr. Martinez? Any further discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. Seven to zero, sorry, boss. Motion carries. Next, we'll consider the approval of the purchase exceeding fifty thousand dollars for the teacher instructional devices refresh by Mr. Dees.
Good evening, Mr. Shadrak, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. Flurry L S D is committed to providing teachers with reliable and up-to-date instructional technology to support effective teaching and learning. Approximately one quarter of the district's current fleet of teachers' laptops were replaced four years ago, while the majority of the devices that are currently in the teachers' hands have been in service for nine school years. Many of these laptops are now experiencing performance issues, hardware failures, and most importantly, they're incompatible with supported Windows operating systems, which creates both security risks and instructional challenges. To maintain instructional continuity and ensure that teachers have dependable technology tools, the district plans to purchase two hundred teacher laptops a school year. These devices will be distributed evenly and across all the campuses, prioritizing the teachers with the oldest devices. Multiple quotes were solicited and reviewed, and the results are included in your board packet. Dell was ultimately selected as a recommended vendor based on cost, specifications, and overall value. The total cost is a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, and local funds have been budgeted to support this purchase. Board action is required for this purchase as it exceeds the fifty thousand dollar limit established by policy CH local. Are there any questions from the board?
The quote, the quote that's in the packet says one oh four, is that, is that the right?
I might have mistyped on my, on my letter here. Whatever the quote is, is.
Yeah, they go one, one oh four, four eighty-eight. Good, we save the money and ready.
I just want to say, Mr. Dees does an unbelievable job in our technology department. Obviously, cybersecurity is a huge concern for districts and for, uh, communities and for any business, any industry, uh, and they do a great job. This right here is just a part of that, um, the, the period we have, or, or reaching the point where Windows can't update, and if they can't update, we can't get the cybersecurity we need. So this is, this is a very valuable thing, and we did build it into the budget. But I just want to say thank you, Mr. Dees, for your department, uh, for everything you do, um, keeping us on our toes.
It's perfect.
Mr. Dees, does that come with everything ready to go, like all the, uh, programs?
It comes with Windows already installed on it, but we have an enterprise version of Windows that's, we can install it on as many devices as possible or that, that we have. Uh, so we wipe them completely from however they come from the factory. We reinstall them with an image of how, what we specifically want on it. They come full of stuff that doesn't necessarily need to be on there, so we.
We will have to incur any other costs.
No other costs, no, sir.
Trying to get some, I can't remember what we've done the last few years.
I think we're going to reuse the same bags and things like that.
Same bags, they, they connect to a docking station that is Dell, so we already checked that they're compatible, so we don't have to buy that. That'd be another two hundred dollar cost for each teacher, so that we'll, we'll be able to utilize the same docking stations.
Docent stations, that's been working pretty well?
Yes, sir. Yes, very well.
What about deployment timeline?
Deployment timeline, um, we're, we're hoping, you know, if we can get this order in by the end of the week, we, we, we hope to have the devices in before we go for Christmas. I talked to the team this morning, they're kind of looking at how they deployed. The la- last time that we deployed, four years ago, we bought about a hundred devices. So this will be about twice as much. It took them about a week. So this will be about twice as much, it took them about a week to get the devices ready themselves. So we're looking at about two weeks for us to turn around, wipe them, and reinstall Windows on it. And then it ultimately would come down to working with the campuses to decide what date would work best. We're looking at maybe one of the Fridays that the teachers come in for the workday. We don't need to take up any time, it's going to be maybe two or three minutes meeting with the teacher, making a swap out. We'll back up their device and, you know, get them ready to go real quick, that's what we're anticipating at least.
Not going to be before, deployment won't be before Christmas, it'd be early spring semester.
If we get the devices in faster, like sooner than I'm anticipating, it's possible, but I'm thinking in January. If there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the teacher device purchase as presented.
I make a motion to approve administrator's recommendation.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Martinez and a second by Mr. Craig Mute. Any further discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor, seven to zero, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
There are many teachers who say thank you very much.
We have concluded our agenda for this meeting, is there any further business? If not, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-four.